Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Bloomington Council Committee, the whole meeting of the 25th of May, 2022. And we have one item on our agenda this evening. That is ordinance 2215 to vacate a public parcel regarding the 12-foot-wide alley segment running east-west between Beeline Trail and the first alley to the west, north of 7th Street and south of 8th Street. Peerless Development petitioner asked to attend this evening is Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation; Eric Greilich, Senior Zoning Planner, and the petitioner's representative this evening. So who would like to begin? Eric is remote, and he will present. Good evening, Eric.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Councilmembers. And so I will just kind of briefly go through the site and a little bit of the petition that was approved by the Plan Commission. So as you mentioned, this is for an alley vacation that is located between 7th and 8th Street, just east of Roger Street, kind of runs into the Beeline Trail. I'm going to briefly just kind of go through a few exhibits to give you an idea of where this is. So the alley is currently paved and extends into a smokestack as part of the Johnson Creamery that has existed here for a long time. This particular site also has an underground culvert that runs through the northeast portion of the site that created some difficulties with the use of the site as petitioner went to the Plan Commission. But the Plan Commission did ultimately approve a site plan for the site to allow for a new building to be constructed on the site. So shown here is the survey that the petitioner has shown or illustrated or submitted to us. This shows a 12-foot by 132-foot alley that kind of bisects 7th and 8th Street and contains a good majority of the smokestack that is on the site currently. So when this went to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission approved the site plan that you see on the screen now, obviously contingent upon this alley vacation. There is a portion of the building that extends into that alley approximately 10 feet, nine feet or so. So the vacation of the alley is essential to allow for the building to be constructed as submitted to the Planning Department and the Plan Commission for when it was approved. So they are requesting that this alley be vacated in order to allow for the project to be constructed. I've got a few exhibits of the elevations for the buildings or the building that was shown. This is looking at the proposed building from the Beeline Trail. So the Beeline Trail is in the foreground here. You can obviously see the smokestack on the left side of the site. Again, another rendering from the Beeline Trail of the proposed building. So the building that was approved is a five-story building, 51 dwelling units. It had some underground parking as well as some surface parking. This is a view of that building from 8th Street and then looking down the north-south alley. And then this rendering here is looking at the east-west alley. This is the portion of the alley that is requested to be vacated. So this is the south side of the building and the smokestack there in the background. So with that, the Plan Commission approved the petition, as I mentioned, subsequent to the vacation of the alley request, which is what the petitioner is here tonight to discuss here with the council. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Greilich. Is there anything that the petitioner would like to add? Or, Ms. Kate, did you want to add anything?
To add to what you just said.
Sure. Please come to the microphone.
Okay. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. And I have a few slides. You have copies of those.
And please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bethcade Corporation Council for the city.
Thank you.
And I didn't know if those are going to be up and visible. If not, I can just work for my own paper copy. You all have copies. But, oh, there we go. Great. Okay. Thanks very much, Stephen. And you can just advance to the next slide. So the administration recommends that the council obtain the following for the right-of-way vacation. We are recommending that the council seek $250,000 to $300,000 from Peerless to fund and maintain public art that would celebrate the historic Johnson Creamery District and the stack, along with an easement to allow installation of that art once it's approved by the HPC as needed. And this is an optional thing, but if they're not doing anything with the bricks that come off of the stack when they are taking it down to 60 feet as part of the unsafe building order, those might be able to be incorporated into an artwork and/or have something else done with them, including potentially even fundraising for public art. Do you want to go to the next slide? The mechanism for this would be Peerless and the city, I think, draft an agreement that reflects donation and easement in exchange for the right-of-way vacation. The council ordinance would approve the agreement and approve vacation of right-of-way effective upon execution of the agreement. And then we do all of the execution at the same time. So we execute the agreement, the easement documentation, and the copy of the ordinance vacating the right-of-way, the agreement, and the easement documentation get filed with the county recorder and the county auditor. And so what this means is Peerless would get the right-of-way with a clear title because the condition for that right-of-way vacation is met the same day. It's reflected in the documentation with the recorder. If you go to the next slide. So why are we suggesting this to council? First, we think it's warranted. I'll say more about public benefit in just a second, but the right-of-way certainly provides substantial commercial benefit to Peerless. My understanding is this is about a $10 million project and a conservative estimate of their annual rent is about $800,000. Could be more than that. Building nine or maybe 10 feet, as Eric was saying, into this 12-foot right-of-way just heightens the public concerns about integrating that new building with the historic structures. You saw some photos of that. And the creamery and the smokestack are iconic. They're iconic structures in Bloomington, and we think that they deserve a world-class project to really reflect that and would like to bring in artists who could be able to do the sort of public art project that we have seen elsewhere. The amount that we're asking for is in line with, and in fact, less than some other recent art projects associated with private building like the Graduate Hotel. It's reasonable as an amount if you look at their rents. That amount is not quite 1/3 of one year's rent or around 1/3 of one year's rent, depending on 250 versus 300,000. Peerless has been receiving income from the stack and tenants in the creamery. And the thing that we're asking for here, this is a fixed and definite commitment. It's basically an amount of money that would be paid in order to assist in realizing a public benefit in exchange for the right-of-way vacation. I think earlier when we had suggested to the Historic Preservation Commission that as the stack gets taken down to 60 feet, Peerless come back with a plan on how to commemorate the stack appropriately. They objected strongly to that. They have objected to really sitting down and talking through any options with respect to commemoration of the historic district. But their concern was that they didn't want to agree to something that was open-ended before the HPC. So a condition that they come back and then start a process with the HPC. This is really saying, look, you will be gaining valuable public asset. It's appropriate for the public benefit to be considered here in terms of what will the public benefit with this right-of-way vacation. And that commitment can be very definite because the money would then be used by the city to go ahead and do what Peerless has actually suggested we do, which is if the city cares about commemoration or public art in connection with this historic district, then we should do it. And so we would actually then take that money and go ahead and engage in a public art project along the lines that you all have seen elsewhere. So, if you could advance, Stephen, thank you. It's not open-ended. Is this permissible? Yes. Like all council decisions, it must be done in the public interest. The right-of-way vacation is something that has to reflect that public interest and public benefit. The state code places this decision within the council's discretion. Council's guidelines, council adopted guidelines about 35 years ago with respect to right-of-way vacation, I think you're familiar with. They also reflect the concern with the public benefit that comes from right-of-way vacation. This is just an example, drawing from some language out of the criteria. It asks the council to look at the potential for increased benefit to the city under private ownership. Does the proposed use contribute to city growth? At the same time, asks the council to consider the relationship of vacation with the comprehensive plan and various other plans. So it's not just growth, per se. That is a public benefit, per se. It is growth that is in line with the city's values, with what we have approved as a city in the comprehensive plan and other related plans. And if you advance, Stephen, I'll just, very briefly, just referring to the comprehensive plan, you can take a look there. And within Goal 2.1, Goal 2.2, and various policies underneath those, there is language in there talking all about ensuring public art, using public spaces to develop culture, to ensure appropriate honoring of historic structures. There's a program suggestion in addition to the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan about incorporating works of public art in high-traffic areas. Another portion of the comp plan that I'm just, I'm giving these as examples, but the outcomes and indicators element, looking at this area of the comprehensive plan talks about whether historic and culturally significant places are being preserved and celebrated. So if you want to go ahead and advance, that's really the end. I'm happy to take questions and talk about this further, but I think overall, I guess what I would say is that the right-of-way is a public asset. It is of value. It will put them and their development right up against the stack and, in fact, includes the stack. I mean, the stack is in this right-of-way. And these are iconic, it's an iconic structure. The district is iconic within Bloomington. And what we're looking for is just some public benefit to come from releasing this public asset to Peerless. So with that, I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kate. Thank you for your presentation. Do we have anything additional in terms of presentation or comments from the petitioner this evening?
We very well may.
Or is that your?
You mean Peerless, are you talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. I do believe someone from Peerless was going to be joining, possibly remotely. But I have that second hand.
Yes, I believe we have Michael Cordero, who should be able to, yes, here we go. And any other folks from Peerless, I believe we've made them co-hosts, so they're able to chime in as necessary.
Good evening. Welcome. And please proceed if you have something to add.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I just want to add that we pushed back against this proposal initially, not for, you know, the purpose of not wanting to do good or see something, you know, that would commemorate the historic significance of the smokestack. It's purely for budgetary reasons. We do not have any extra money. Our project, as it is, is over $3 million over budget. So we don't know if this is even going to happen. Add to that, you know, that's not taking into account $350,000 to repair the smokestack, which we've been ordered to do. The loss of income and value by losing AT&amp;T as a tenant, the loss of value via COVID from losing office tenants in the Johnson Creamery building. We are so far underwater on this project, adding another $250,000 cost is not, we're sitting here struggling to figure out how are we going to even pay for this demolition and repair of the smokestack. We can't get this project done this year because of all the delays that all of this process has caused us. We were counting on a construction loan to help fund that portion of the repair. So we're sitting here in a major bind, and now we're being asked to contribute another $250,000 to $300,000 for artwork. And that just feels, you know, it's undoable on our side.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cordero. I'm sure questions will follow. And so we appreciate your comments to begin. And let's go to council questions. I think Councilmember Sandberg was next, and Councilmember Scambaluri, and Councilmember Sims.
My question, again, Ms. Kate, you can probably answer it, is was this proposal that you're recommending for us to require before we vacate the alleys, was that discussed with the petitioner in advance of this meeting? I mean, did they receive the information in a timely fashion for them to be able to consider it?
We had earlier conversations with them before kind of this stage about sitting down and talking through various options that could be done in and around the stack. So we did have those conversations at that time. I don't know that a dollar figure was attached that's earlier, back when we were still in the process of getting the stack height decided and things like that. I know yesterday, the deputy mayor did speak with Joe Patrick at Peerless, and he talked about this, I think, specific proposal. So, yes, in that sense, yeah, so they've got that. And we're, you know, we're happy, and we said it all along, we're happy to sit down and talk with Peerless. We've had numerous times when we've suggested sitting down and talking about this and are happy to continue to do that. The other thing I guess I would say is, you know, we would contemplate, I mean, it's obviously up to Peerless how they deal with their own money, but they could do this as a donation and presumably get some kind of tax benefit from that as well. So that's a piece of consideration here. You know, I don't know what else to say in response to the, we just don't have the money. But, so yes, in response to your question, we have talked with them in the past. We've talked with them specifically yesterday about this particular proposal.
And if I could just follow up. And with respect to a public benefit, this is a project that is doing nothing with affordable housing. It is doing nothing with any kind of environmental or, you know, that's incorporated within the development, correct?
You are correct about there are no affordable housing units in this. This is market rate, I believe, luxury apartment housing. But I do believe that there are some sustainability incentives that were used here. They may have shifted a little bit along the way, and either Eric or Scott can correct me if I'm wrong. I think they started out with solar on the project, have run into some difficulties in getting that done, and so are switching to a stormwater management sustainability incentive. So, but on affordability, yes, you are right.
Okay. Thank you. I may have more questions, but I'll.
Well, and I would like to allow Mr. Cordero to respond regarding, because I'm curious about the outreach by the administration. Do you have a comment about that? Have you been engaged in discussion about this?
Yes. So we were contacted by the deputy mayor yesterday around 5:00 Central Time, maybe 4:30 Central Time, giving us a heads-up about this $250,000 request. But I'd also like to say that every time prior to this, when we said, listen, we were told, you know, sort of casually, $150,000 is what we were being shown as a budget. And we were like sticker shock. And then we were made to look like a bad guy for not even being willing to put a plaque up to commemorate the smokestack. And that is absolutely, you know, a couple-thousand-dollar plaque, sure, we would not even be having the conversation. But we were made to look like, you know, pardon my French, but a-holes for refusing to do even the most minimal thing. And here and now, we're being asked, again, for a quarter of a million dollars. It's that, you know, the communication and the way it's been presented to the public has been all slanted to make us look bad. And I think it's unfair to say that there's been honest and open dialogue about this type of value being placed on it.
Okay, Mr. Cordero, I was just referring to the advance warning. So you were first engaged last evening? Is that your recollection?
Yes. Last night, in terms of this particular request.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Can I just add one thing? I would like to respond because I was in a meeting where either you or another representative from Peerless, Mr. Cordero, said no to even the plaque. So I just want to be clear about that. You said, we will give you an easement. The easement part of that had been, I think, something Peerless agreed to from the get-go to say, if the city wants to come onto the property and install something, a plaque, anything, we're fine with that. In fact, we encourage it. That's it, though.
For future reference, please address the chair when you, instead of engaging with the petitioner. But thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
From your point of view. So Councilmember Scambaluri, you had a question.
Yes, thank you. This is directed to Mr. Cordero. I'd like to have a better understanding of the implications of not receiving this alley vacation. What would that actually do to the project? I'm sure it could either kill it, or it could require no adjustment at all. And the truth is, it's probably somewhere in the middle. So what would this do to your project to not receive this vacation?
Well, we cannot do the project without the alley vacation, or it would require a complete redesign, which would be the second time. And again, talking, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of design and engineering work in another year of time. And, you know, frankly, we're looking at probably just selling this property. Like, it's been, this has been a nightmare.
And what would it do to the scope of the project and the number of units and things like that? Do you have a sense of that?
It would probably reduce the project by four or five, hmm, four or five units, five units.
So am I hearing you say that in the absence of this alley vacation, you would shut down the project?
We don't have time to redesign. We bought this with the intention of being a long-term owner in Bloomington through an opportunity zone program. Our investors that we're working with deferred capital gains for this fund, this purpose. And we have a timeline, and we would have to go back completely redesign. We, again, we don't have the, we don't have the time or the capital to do that. We would likely just sell the project. And if somebody else wants to come in and use these plans and get a, you know, go for an alley vacation, they could do that. But I don't think we'd have the wherewithal to do that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
It was mentioned that there is a possible tax benefit based on the deduction that they could consider. Is this something that we know? Is this actually true and available? Or is it something we're speculating?
Well, I dived into, Councilmember Sims, the ways that they might approach that. All I'm suggesting is that we could structure this as a donation to a city art fund. And to the extent that tax deductions or tax benefits are available for that sort of, you know, if we structure it as a charitable donation in that way, then they would be able to take advantage of that. So, or at least it's something worth exploring.
Okay. Can Mr. Cordero respond to that? Is that true?
I would imagine that that is true, that there is a write-off component if it was a donation. So that means, you know, you're talking about 30% of whatever that value is kind of coming back as a tax benefit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cordero. One question I do have, and this is more of a process question. In the memo, actually, it was in the packet from last week, and we use the word typically, I don't know, two or three times throughout this document. But it also goes on to tell you the normal process, beginning with pre-petition reviews of the application to the Planning and Transportation Department. Then it goes to utility services, safety services. Board of Public Works are notified of the proposed action. Then of completion of that, typically, the Board of Public Works each make a recommendation on this request. And then it says, note that the Board of Public Works has not considered this petition. So I guess my question is, what makes this project so atypical that it didn't go before the Board of Public Works? I'm not saying that it's necessary, but I think on projects like this, the more authority entities that have eyes on things like this makes it better for us. So can we explain why it was decided that this shouldn't have went before the Board of Public Works?
Let me kick that question over. If you're directing it to me, Councilmember Sims, I think I'm going to kick it to either Eric or to Scott to answer that.
Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. And to answer that question, again, based on the guidance from council that passed in the 80s, late 80s on process, planning and transportation is supposed to shepherd these alley vacation requests through the process, which includes a stop at the Board of Public Works. Board of Public Works makes a recommendation, like many other boards and advisory commissions. And I think the intent, again, I don't know for certain, is just so that they're aware of, because they are responsible for the right-of-way and encroachments into the right-of-way. And they do all sorts of approvals for street vendors and what have you. Now, why did this case not go before there, that there was a desire by the petitioner to get on the Board of Public Works? But as you know, in conversations with the complications with the historic district, the smokestack, and all those other things just complicated the process. The petitioner has reached out to us and expressed their desire to move forward because they're concerned. Mr. Cordero already expressed their fears about timelines and not another year. So we've been working with them to kind of hit the ground running by this June 1st deadline so that if this decision is made for the right-of-way vacation, they are queued up for the June 1st or the June Plan Commission to consider the change to the sustainability incentives. So that was maybe in a way to help address some of the timeline issues and, again, trying to sort out various boards and agendas in their workload. But this has been a complicated petition in the beginning that really, quite honestly, kind of goes back to the fact that it was unclear at the time when they filed for the Plan Commission that it was a condition that this alley vacation request be considered. So that's what the site plan is contingent upon. So I hope that answers your question. Mr. Sims, it was not my decision not to bring it to the Board of Public Works, but again, their advisory in that role ultimately is the decision of council on alley vacations.
Following up on what typically the process is, and this time, we did not apparently do what we typically do. And I just wondered what makes Peerless so atypical. That was my main concern with that.
Yeah. And I will kind of add, and sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Sims, I've been here since 2002, and I can think of maybe three or four alley vacation requests since I've been here. We don't process alley vacation requests on a frequent basis. It's very unusual that we've had three this year that we're, you're considering. So I'll just leave that as a, again, maybe, it's hard for, maybe I shouldn't have used the word typical because we typically don't see very many alley vacation requests. So, thank you.
You used typical, but you said typical again. No, I'm just kidding you there. The only comment I would make is that this council depends on other authority entities and commissions and boards to help us with decision-making. So I understand that decision. We decided not to do that. But I think that is something that would help us, in particular, when we get into situations like this, that it's not quite as smooth as we would like. So it's just a comment. No need to respond unless you like.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Before we go to second round questions, Councilmember Smith, do you have any? I would just like to ask Ms. Kate what the intention of the $250,000 to $300,000 is in terms of how that would manifest? What would we see for that in terms of celebrating the historic Johnson Creamery District and stack?
I think, Councilmember Rallo, what I think we would look to do is to use that money in a way that we would otherwise do for a really strong
money in a way that we would otherwise do for a really strong, excellent public art project. And I know that, or I believe that, anyway, ESD Director Crowley is here virtually, and I might ask him to jump in and speak a little bit to that. We've been consulting with ESD on the amount of funding that it would take to do something like that and how that might work. So let me go ahead and turn it over to Alex.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, what do you have in mind?
Well, I think the outcome, the exact outcome is to be determined, but I think the broad, brushed approach would be to do a artist call-out, and to do a sort of national significant artist call-out, and to do a significant piece here. As you all realize, the Johnson Creamery, and even the Smokestack itself, is a significant part of Bloomington. We'd like to honor that. And to do that, I think it's necessary to really have, you know, substantial and reasonable funding available to be able to attract the right kind of art piece that would celebrate that structure.
Can you think of something comparable?
Well, you know, I think if you look at the Graduate Hotel, the artists involved is a significant artist. The piece contributes very well to the downtown, aligns well with our value. So from a Bloomington perspective, that would be a good example of what can be achieved when you have a good collaboration between the private industry and the city in terms of yielding an outcome. You know, I'd be guessing in terms of what potentially could be the solution here, but the idea would be that we really would want to go do something significant. I think the community would want to see something significant, and unfortunately, you know, and the cost of that is significant as well.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to second round questions. Do we have a question from Councilmember Smith after all?
Certainly thinking about all these things, and everybody's asking the questions already asking, was going to ask, do we, is there an opinion from the Historic Preservation Group on whether this vacation is okay with them?
... process. So, but, any artwork that would be installed within, that touches the historic district, would involve them. And so that piece of this would absolutely go back before the HPC. And we would envision consultation, as Alex was saying, in that National Art Call-out. We would also expect consultation with the Arts Council and other folks on what would be appropriate for the project. But in terms of the right-of-way vacation itself, that's, this process does not really involve the HPC. Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. We're on second round questions from council, and we'll go to Councilmember, Council President Sandberg.
Thank you. If Mr. Crowley is still on the call here, I'm questioning, is this proposal that we're considering here about the $250,000 to $300,000, is this based loosely on our own policy for the own, for our own developments, the 1% for the arts? Is that kind of where this was, the idea that if we're going to give up something of benefit, we want to be sure we're getting something back in return with respect to the look and the feel and the cultural aspects of the city?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Sandberg. Yes, it is. It is both loosely and also sort of from a dollar perspective. You know, we looked at some of the other examples around town. You'll note, for example, that the Fourth Street Garage has a pretty remarkable piece of artwork on it, which was by no means preordained, but it was really part of the 1% for the art project, or process, and also, you know, very integral to the structure, widely recognized as such, widely appreciated as such. And so, you know, as we looked around for different examples of really the 1%, which, as you know, applies to public art, or public, you know, capital investments, we were looking at the amounts that were required to deliver some of those projects, and zeroed in on this amount as being appropriate and reflective of what we've seen elsewhere.
Councilmember Scambaluri? All right. Would somebody else like to take a bite? Councilmember Smith, I think, has a question.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify for me, on the warranted, on your slides, it says, "Building nine feet into 12 feet right-of-way heightens public concerns about integrating new building with historic structures." Can you say more about that? And I guess the reason I'm asking that is, wasn't that, didn't that come up earlier?
The map of the historic district changed. So initially, it was, it included more space in the parking lot on the north side, and it came down, and we didn't oppose that to, if you will, shrink the historic district a little bit. And again, I would say, I think we've tried to really work and be accommodating with Peerless, including, in that sense, we didn't oppose the change to the historic district map. I think what I mean here is just, there's always a concern when you have a designated historic district, which this council has created, and this right-of-way vacation actually includes the stack. I mean, the stack is right in this right-of-way vacation. It's part of the historic district. So all I mean here is just, they are building this big structure that's going to generate a lot of income for Peerless. They're getting a significant benefit from being able to use that right-of-way, and they're going to use the vast majority of it, nine or 10 feet out of 12, to generate that income. And it's, you know, we're always concerned about, how then do you integrate that with the rest of the community, and how do you integrate it with, in this particular case, these historic structures, which, you know, one of which the stack is coming down to 60 feet, but it's still going to be there. It still represents something historic in Bloomington. So really, that's all I mean there, is that this is part of, when you think about the public benefit, it's taking all of these circumstances into account and saying, this is, you know, you would be vacating a public asset to allow for an expanded version of this development, this, for market-rate housing, as Councilmember Sandberg said and noted before. And we don't, you know, I'm not faulting that, but it raises then, okay, so what are the public benefits? Well, this just, one of the facts here is that this is now going to be budding up very close to that historic district. And we've been accommodating about the map, but, you know, we want to see some give and take. This is, again, what's the public benefit in exchange for giving up this public value? Sure.
Councilmember Scambaluri, and then Council President Sandberg.
Yes, thank you. My question's directed to Mr. Cordero, if you want to pop back in. Although he had his hand up, so I'm not, now he doesn't. Okay. I'm going to stumble over this question a little bit. I've heard you describe this project as a nightmare, but I haven't heard a hard no this evening. So I'm wondering, what in your mind are next steps here? Are there people you need to consult with? Or is this, are there next steps? What are next steps here in your mind?
We cannot agree to this. I will say, that is a definite no. We cannot agree to a $250,000 to $300,000 contribution. Next steps on our side are a title claim with our title insurance company who missed this alley vacation. What I did, I had my hand raised to comment that, you know, this public asset has not been used by anyone in the public as a, you know, as an alley, which is just an access right-of-way. It hasn't been used by the public in probably 100 years. It's been part of the Johnson Creamery site and not accessed by the public. So we, it is a hard no. We cannot, we cannot agree to it. You know, if that's the case, we will withdraw our petition and, you know, figure out what our next steps are.
That's helpful information. Thank you.
Council President Sandberg.
My question has to do with the Smokestack. Is it my understanding that AT&amp;T is not able to remove its equipment for quite some time? I don't know who can speak to that, and what does this do to this project, or to this proposal, or to Peerless?
I can speak to that. We're told that sort of end of July is when they can reasonably remove their equipment, which means that their new tower is up and functioning and tested, and then they can sort of safely, in terms of having coverage for the Sheriff's Department and IU Health, you know, they can sort of safely take down the old equipment.
So are they still paying you, as the property owner, for the use of the tower for their equipment through the July, or whenever they're able to remove the equipment?
That is correct.
And can you give us an idea how much that is, that you receive from AT&amp;T?
It's $2,000 per month.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, this is, you know, $250,000 is 10 years' worth of rent, you know, paid by AT&amp;T, more than 10. And we've owned it for, you know, two years.
Any other second round questions from council? Seeing none, I have one, and that is maybe to Mr. Grelick. I'm curious about this topic being discussed, the Plan Commission. Did the Plan Commission discuss what reciprocity might be in place for this vacation of the alley in terms of design or materials?
No, they simply looked at the petition as it was presented, and they were aware that there was a condition of approval, that the alley vacation would need to occur in order for the project to be constructed as shown. So it was, you know, obviously, the Plan Commission does not approve alley vacations or make recommendations. So it was just left open-ended that that was something that would have to be resolved.
Could you describe a little bit about the accuracy of the rendering that you displayed earlier? That is, is that relatively precise in terms of what we would expect to see in terms of design and materials? And what are the materials?
Yeah, and certainly the petitioner can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. It was a mix of some brick, some metal, and then cementous siding around all four sides. Obviously, you've got some also wood trim kind of aspects around some of the balconies and window areas. So it met, it meets all of our architectural requirements.
I see.
Yeah. And like I said, the petitioner can certainly correct me or add anything if they want on the materials.
Okay. And just to drill down a little bit more, is the gray, is that metal? Is that what I'm?
That would be a fiber cement siding.
And then just a little bit more, that was my other question. Oh, how many units is the development?
It was 51 units.
51? And four to five essentially would have to be removed, and so this alley would essentially remove four to five units and interrupt the contiguity of the development, right? It would, you would have two buildings.
Yeah, so they would have to remove this, you know, southern 10-foot of the building. So everything on that vertical plane, all five stories, would be affected.
I see. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions from council? I have one more, and that is, Mr. Lucas, how would we, I'm not certain in terms of how to employ this, these conditions. How would it occur in terms of this legislation? An amendment to this ordinance?
Well, this is, I will say, Stephen Lucas, council administrator and attorney. This is a novel, I think, idea for a right-of-way vacation. The administration has laid out, what I believe in the slides, was an agreement that would accompany the ordinance. I don't know that that would become part of this ordinance. You've also heard the petitioner say that they wouldn't be able to agree to it. So if they're not able to reach an agreement, I think what's before you is the request of the petitioner as originally submitted, which is to vacate the right-of-way.
Yes, I see. Okay. All right. So barring an agreement, it would be, we would proceed in terms of amendment to this ordinance in our next meeting if we wanted to pursue that?
I think, it's a good question. Whether the council could just add this as an amendment, because this is a conveyance document, this would be recorded with the county recorder's office, and if you all attach a condition to this, there shouldn't be any uncertainty as to whether that condition's been met or not. It would cloud the future title. And so I think we'd need to have that condition resolved, as laid out in Corporation Council Kate's presentation at the time the ordinance is voted on. So I don't know that we could, that the council could add a condition in the ordinance, leave it open-ended, and say, "This is granted, subject to the property owner taking these steps." I think we'd need to have that agreement in place at the time the council acts. And if they're not able to do that, I think the council, again, is left with the request as submitted by the petitioner, and you all would have to make a determination based on the city's criteria for reviewing right-of-way vacation requests.
Okay. Thank you for that. If there are no other questions from council, Councilmember Sims has a question.
One more. There's $250,000 to $300,000 that we're talking about. Was this negotiable? When we entered into conversations with Peerless, was it, this is what it is, and you have to do it, or was this a negotiation discussion? Apparently, that has started at 5:30 yesterday.
Well, and again, I would answer that in sort of two parts. The first part is, in earlier conversations, Councilmember Sims, we tried to suggest to Peerless, we did suggest to Peerless, that we sit down and talk through, we showed them a range of potential art projects, asked them to sit down with us, and do that sort of negotiation, actually. That did not have specific dollars attached, because we just didn't get anywhere with that, because the response was, "If the city wants to do something, we are more than happy to give you an easement, and you guys go off and do it, and that's it. That's all we're going to do." Last night, I think, was the first time, again, that the $250,000 to $300,000 was suggested as an ask from the city. And I was not actually in on that conversation, so I can't give you the, you know, verbatim about negotiation. I guess I would say this. We remain willing to sit and talk with Peerless about finding an option here that makes sense, that is workable, and that is what we're looking for by way of public benefit in exchange for what is a public asset, and a valuable one. So.
One more. If I may. This, how do we arrive to this amount, $250,000 to $300,000? Was that based on the graduate, what we've done at the parking garage? How did we even come to that number?
I might turn it back over to Alex Crowley. Again, all I would say is, we've been consulting with ESD because of their close work with public art.
Yes.
And that figure, Alex, if you want to jump in and speak a little bit more to that, I know you made some comments earlier, but...
Sure. Alex Crowley, Director of Sustainable Development. So, Councilmember Sims, the, you know, the process we undertook was beyond just a sort of baseline understanding of what, you know, projects around the country can cost. We did look at projects in Bloomington, and we triangulated to some extent. So there are certain projects that are significantly more than this amount, certain projects that were on a smaller scale that were less than this amount, and we were envisioning what might be here, and tried to place it within the context of some of those other costs. And so that's how we got to this range.
Other thing I'll say, just to add to that, is that the amount that we're looking at is reflecting both creation and some maintenance of that art, because it has to sort of last over time. So there's some... So there's some piece of it that's related to the maintenance, not just the creation.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would just like to hear at some point more specifics on how we arrived at that number, at that total. We triangulate this and we take, consider that and we think about the maintenance. There has to be hard things that add up to what we think we're going to need for this maintenance, and particularly since it's not a longer-term commitment. Once the money's paid, then it's a done deal, at least from their standpoint. So I just want to know how we got there. Maintenance, are we talking in perpetuity? Is this fund going to take it for the next 10 years? I would just like to hear more about that once we reconvene. Thank you.
Further questions? I have one for the petitioner, Mr. Cordero. When you entered into this project, you knew that the alleyway was maintained, but where, well, it was in the possession of the city and required vacation. What would, what did you consider in terms of the public good that would be rendered? I mean, what was your expectation going through this process that, that this vacation would occur and what might be expected?
So going into this, purchasing it, and all the way up until our Plan Commission meeting, we had no clue that this alley had not already been vacated. It was our understanding and the information that we got from our title company, our surveyors, that this alley had been vacated in the 90s when they, I believe when they were doing the, the redevelopment into the office building. So we came into this completely blindsided, not knowing that this was an issue. We raised it immediately with our title company and started down the path of, you know, trying to research, had it been vacated, did somebody miss something? And, you know, that's, we, we all agreed and found out that nobody could find any records of it being vacated previously. So we came into this in the dark in terms of this being an issue.
When did you find out? That it had not been vacated? It, when you were within, when, when you were in that, the Plan Commission process or before?
Yeah, when they, when they basically proposed a condition of approval upon us proving that the alley had been vacated, that's when we started digging. And we're like, okay, we, we gave it to the title company that, that gave us our insurance. They did a, you know, thorough search of the records. They could not find it. And it, they, they came to that conclusion, I want to say, in either December or January of, of this past, you know, December 21 or January. And by that time, we were, you know, well, well underway in terms of our construction drawings and, and design work.
Okay, could, could I just, you know, again, to find out a little bit more about this history? Mr. Robinson, when, in this process, when, when a petitioner is proposing a development, when is an incumbent on the city to tell the petitioner that the, the city is, maintains an alleyway easement?
So I, I can comment on that real quickly as I was the, the case manager for this. So as the petitioner said, you know, they had an Ulta survey that they had done, they submitted to us, that appeared to show that the alley had been vacant, that it didn't exist, you know, their deed spanned the entire property length. As we got into the Plan Commission report and writing, you know, we delved into that a little bit further, we, we couldn't find any record of the alley actually being vacated. So we put the condition of approval on there that, that just needed to be verified. You know, it, it seemed like it might be possible, you know, maybe there were documents that were just missing that we had not found yet. But as they did more research, nobody could find any documents. There were a few alley encroachments that had happened on this property in the early 90s. So we had looked into those, thinking maybe there was some vacation of this alley that had happened at that time as well, but that was not the case. So as we, after the Plan Commission hearing did, you know, everybody was doing more research, nobody could find any record of the alley vacation.
So you, when you received the application and you were in the Plan Commission, apparently you revealed this during the Plan Commission process, is that correct?
Yes, and actually, this was, you know, when this came up, this was actually the second hearing, or the second round of approvals for this. The first time, this went to the Plan Commission in 2019. You know, we, we didn't really delve into it, we didn't question as much, we, we trusted the survey. So it was only the second time around when they came back, you know, six months later because they had to redesign the project due to some complexities, removing the culvert, and they had to redesign it. You know, we, we had more time to look into it as part of that and realized that we did not have any record of the, the vacation happening.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Roberts, Remmison?
I think, you know, the petitioner stated that, you know, their title company missed it, like it's, it just was a difficult situation to track down on that. And again, that's why staff had that condition in there to make sure that we could, they could move forward, that it was clearly vacated or not, because there was that ambiguity in the kind of record-keeping in that instance.
Okay, thank you. That's clarifying. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we will go to public comment if there's any comments. Doesn't look like there is any public in the gallery. Are there any on, online?
Yes, and I'll just mention for any members of the public watching on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature to indicate that you'd like to comment. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions button or the more button. If you're not able to locate the raise hand button, please just send a chat to the meeting host and we can recognize you that way. I do see one hand raised at the moment.
Please.
And first up is John Lawrence.
Good evening, Mr. Lawrence. Please identify yourself and proceed. You have five minutes.
Hi, this is actually Jan Sorby on John's computer. And I am the Chair of the Endangered Historic Properties Committee on the Board of Bloomington Restoration. So I've been watching this process all the way through. And what, what I'm hearing here is this is basically hardship. That's what I'm hearing Peerless talking about is hardship. The problems with the smokestack, they said, was a hardship, basically. Now, those problems with the smokestack have been known for decades. They bought this property knowing that there were problems with the smokestack. And essentially, if you vacate the alley, you're giving them free land. Then also, I want to say that the secret, that, that there is, there is a way of dealing with hardship in terms of historic preservation, in terms of the smokestack. Duncan Campbell informed Peerless that the Secretary of Interior has forms that they can fill out, and it is for the renovation and working of the smokestack. And he said, if Peerless thinks that they can make a case for hardship, then they should go ahead and fill this out. The other idea that I wanted to bring up is in terms of the historic district map. The Secretary of Interior says that the most important buildings need to have a larger, what they call a view shed, which means space around it. And I'm not unhappy if we get a little bit more space by the Johnson Creamery because it is a really important building for Bloomington. And there aren't any, there, we have so few sort of commercial buildings left of this era. So I am saying that there are ways of filing for hardship, that a historic building of this nature, of this character, can certainly well benefit from having a little bit more space. And I guess I'm here to say that I think vacating the alley and giving it away for free sets a really bad precedent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorby. Mr. Lucas, any, any other public comment?
No, not that I see.
Okay, then we will return to council for final comments and a recommendation. Council President Samberg, did you have a comment?
Yes. This council traditionally does not give up alleyways without some pretty significant public benefit, as is evidenced by even with our own property, the Hopewell Development, we are still negotiating about the alleys that are, that we're being asked to vacate there. This, this is very important. And what I've heard throughout our meeting this evening is this project is $3 million over budget. If I heard that correctly, they're underwater. The project is a nightmare. It's a hard no with the proposal that's been placed in front of us this evening, that they may withdraw, they were blindsided by the whole alley. It's a hardship, and that they're perhaps looking at selling the property. So given that this evening, I think my inclination, if there's not going to be any movement toward a negotiation for the 250 to 300,000 for a significant art project, which is, you know, something that has been our practice with at least our own buildings that we, we, we develop, I think my vote this evening will be no on vacating the alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scamblery.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the discussion tonight. I appreciate a lot of the good questions and information shared. There are some arguments I don't find very compelling, one of which is, well, nobody's used this alley in a while. So, so it is still a public asset and we are elected by Bloomington residents and we have an obligation to think intentionally about how those assets are used. So, so the notion that it hasn't been used lately isn't very compelling to me. This is a really, really desirable piece of property and could theoretically put residential units overlooking the B-line, overlooking Farmers Market in a very desirable part of town. There is, there is a lot of money to be made on this and it, I cannot help but notice it doesn't contribute to our affordable housing goals or, or anything like that, particularly because this is a one-time request, it's not an ongoing, open-ended request. It seems to me to be something worth considering, and what I have heard the petitioner say is a hard no. You know, I, I've heard that it's not something they would consider, period. Given that, given, I think, what is our obligation to think intentionally about what we do with public assets, I'm inclined not to support this vacation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from council? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, and thank everyone for their participation this evening. This evening, I, understanding this is not the final decision I'll pass this evening, and I'd like to think about it a little bit more. It is quite apparent that this vacation could or would lead to what we need as a public benefit. It's just how do we define that and how do we get there? So I think the need is clear. That's why I raised the question of negotiation and talking about it, see if we could come to some agreement. But one thing I will say, and I asked a question earlier about process, and one of the things that I, as a city council member, rely upon is information, in particular from our staff, from petitioners, from organizations, from commissions, from boards, that sort of thing. And one of the things that I put at the forefront is that our staff, those present in this room, I consider in-house experts in what it is we're talking about. So I tend to lean toward experts. That hasn't changed, but I just got to say, the process that we were talking about and different things and how we've talked about some things, but not in terms of being definitive, and now we give definitive numbers and how we've kind of talked about some things, but nothing definitive. I don't feel good about the process. Has nothing to do with our staff and our expertise, it's just how we worked on this project and negotiated to get to this point. So I just got to say, I don't really feel good about it. I'm not so sure I know how to feel about it, but it just don't feel good at this point. Like I said, I will pass, but it is clear that there is some discussion warranted and a decision to be made on the public benefit on vacating this piece of property, in particular in this project downtown by the B-line in a historic building, historic district. So there's a lot of things to discuss. So I'll be passing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thanks Chairman Rello. You know, thanks to everybody, Mr. Cordero and the city staff for all, all your time and energy. Like a relationship that's kind of gone bad and you're not exactly sure why, it's kind of unfortunate in my mind. I, I thought we started off, you know, really with this project in a very cooperative way with, you know, the city historic preservation and Mr. Cordero all kind of working together. And so now it's, it seems like it's really kind of gone off the rails now and I'm not really sure why. And I would also agree with Mr., as Mr. Sims has said, that it's, it's just kind of, you know, I don't really feel good about the process. I'm not exactly sure how it all went this direction. You know, maybe it's time for us to all go our separate ways on this one. So tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to pass tonight and just continue to think about the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And I, I would just say that I, before a decision next week, I, I need to consider this vacation, whether to proceed, what utility that easement has, whether it would be utilized, what is commensurate, commensurate for public good, and I do have some process concerns as well to consider, so I'll be passing this evening too. So thank you all for your input. This has been very helpful to us. And do we have a recommendation? All right, let me begin on my right with Councilmember Sims.
Pass.
Councilmember Scamblery?
No.
I will vote pass. Councilmember Samberg?
No.
Pass.
That's 023. Thank you. And that concludes our agenda this evening. Thank you all for, for attending, and we will adjourn this evening. Thank you.